All right, thank everybody's attention please. I hope everybody's had a good day. It's not raining. But it's getting colder. So, anyway, if you would, please silence your cell phones or place some silence and cut them off or put on vibrator. Now, if it's Commissioner Nick's father, I'm not going to tell him no. His dad might come by, please. So, anyway, all right, let's get started here. We do have copies of our agenda readily available on the podium. If you'd like to have a copy, please feel free to grab one. Today is Monday, February the 4th, and I've actually got 4:31, so we're a minute behind here. So if you would, hereby call this meeting to order. Please rise. We recite the Pleasant Leagues.
Laid to leagists through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, it is actually March the 4th, not February the 4th. Today is Monday, March the 4th, and I've got 4:32 in the afternoon. Ms. Shanda, if you will redact the minutes, I'd really appreciate that, and erase the tape as well. Okay, all right. At this time, item three for our invocations, Pastor Avery Hato of the Bridge Church, as was representing the White County Minister Alliance. Pastor Hato, will you bless the proceedings, please?
That's right. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you today just thanking you for being just such an awesome and loving God. Lord, we just pray today that you would just touch each and every one of these commissioners as they make decisions that would affect this county. Lord, we just pray that you would give them the wisdom to turn to you for God in every decision that is made. Lord, we just thank you for allowing us to live in such a beautiful county and just pouring out your blessings upon us. In your whole name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our agenda. Item four, consider adopting the minutes of the work session in regular meeting that was held on February the 4th, 2019, and the call meeting held February the 12th, 2019, as well as the work session and call meeting, including executive session minutes, held February the 25th, 2019. Gentlemen, I hope you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion approved.
Mr. Bryant, first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Holcomb, second. Any discussion? All right, having down on favor the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say aye, motion carries. At this time, there are proclamations and presentiments. I'd like Director Murphy, as a recognition of the White County Public Safety and for Animal Control Division for their achievements. Director Murphy, you've got the hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there's the board. I want to take an opportunity to highlight some of the achievements of all of our divisions throughout this coming year, and we want to start out with our Animal Control Division. In 2018, last year, this division completed 243 hours of training certifications in National Animal Patrol and Humane Officer segments A and B through Colorado State University and also through the Animal Control Training Association. This training program was established in 2016, so I'm proud to announce that we have a certified staff of employees now at the animal control facility. These are the kill technicians and the animal control officers. Last year, they received or responded to 1,089 calls for services, most of these being in the unincorporated areas of the county. This averages to 1,251 calls per year over the last three years. Most of these calls were barky noise complaints and abandoned stray animals. Citations were issued, they are down this year over the last, they was down in 2018 over previous years. This because our staff is working with the homeowners or the owners of the animals to make sure they do what's right before they're issued a citation and brought to court. And a lot of these folks are complying with the codes of the county to make sure they take care of their animals and do the right things. In 2018, we took in over 1,400 animals. This is a 29% increase over the last, from previous, from the previous year, and a 71% increase over the last three years. Most of these being cats or feral cats. We have had several spay and neuter programs. We have remained balanced the last two years for that. We lost a major program with a land and spay and neuter program in 2017. They were one of the big ones that came up and did a lot for us, but they discontinued coming out to counties and doing these spay and neuter programs because of finances on their own. Out of the intakes that we had, we were about 70% on outcomes. In other words, we rescue and find the owners and match the animal back with the ownership or adopt those out. About 70% of what we take in goes back out. And some of the highlights for the last year, we received a $5,000 grant from the Department of the HAG for their low-cost spay and neuter program, programs. We have a working relationship now with a new program called Project Cat Snip, which is a project for that takes care of the feline population with spay and neuters. We have a new contract with Chestnut VCA for vet services that has lowered our cost on medical side, and also they're helping us out with some spay and neuter programs for our community. Our quarterly low-cost adoption program continues and has been very successful. Our officers continue to maintain the facilities, the vehicles and the equipment, and are effectively managing this program. And I'd like to introduce those officers to you right now. They've done outstanding job over the last two years. I think all of you have been to the facility, went through and looked at the improvements that have been made. I know some of you have actually adopted animals from us, and we appreciate that. And we would encourage you to continue to stop by at any time and take a look at how things are going down there. Because we're very proud of what this division has done over the last couple of years in bringing this back to a professional run operation. And I appreciate your support on behalf of them and giving them the tools and the items that they need to be able to do the job that needs to be done for our citizens and our, at least to these, our cats and dog population in the county. So let me introduce those to you. Our Chief Animal Control Officer is Joey Castner. Our Sergeant and Second Agent Man is Fred Quinn. Cheryl Dockrue, you know Cheryl, she's been around for a while, she's our office manager. She keeps everything going down there. We have a Animal Control Officer, Jessica Amador. Part-time Animal Patrol Officer and Kennel Technician, Laura Keen. And then our Kennel Technician, Part-time Tanya Oya. These are our staff in our animal control facility. I'd like to give them a hand.
Chief Castner, on behalf of the board, we understand a lot of times what you guys do goes on behind the scenes. A lot of folks don't realize what's going on, the services that you guys are providing. And I think by Director Murphy's comments, the just crazy amount of calls that you guys, the number of them, some of them are crazy too, but it's already, I'm sorry, rewind the tape on that one. But the number of calls that you all go on in situations, I've actually had to call you on some matters, and I appreciate you guys coming out and trying to find the owners, you know, some of these stray cats or dogs. In my case, it was a dog, it was someone's dog. And you can tell it was loving, one of them was, the other one, leave that alone right now. They belong to someone. And I think a lot of that is discernment, you've got to have an idea. But I appreciate what you guys do. It's unsung, but we just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate especially your hours of training. You know, we just kind of take you for granted sometimes, and thank you, and our Animal Control Department has really come a long way under all of your efforts. And I'd like to give an opportunity, and the commissioners, would you like to say something at this time?
I'd like to say I appreciate what you do. I'm no joy since we played baseball when we was kids, him and my son's about the same age, and I, when we was playing baseball, I never dreamed that he'd be the head hunter with the animals. But he's doing a good job doing it, we appreciate it. Appreciate what all of you have done.
All of you have done a great job. I used to dread going down there because of the smell, but the last couple of years it's, it's really pleasant, it's clean, it's the cleanest animal, animal shelter I've been in anywhere. So y'all are just to be commended for the job you do and go beyond the calling duty. We appreciate it. Appreciate my animals, I can get them there too.
I agree with that, laying there, because I came down and I was really, really pleasantly surprised at how, how nice it was in there, how, that there wasn't any odor and all, so appreciate that.
I'll second, third, all of that. My point department's really gone down over the last few years, we all down there, we don't get any phone calls no more, and I appreciate the good work y'all do, I really do. I'll see you on the field.
Well, one last, I want to say congratulations to Papa Fred. Again, how many is that, Fred?
Four.
Four grandchildren, so congratulations. Guys, thank y'all very much, and absolutely, I want you guys to plan, you're welcome to stay, but I understand if you'd rather not, we, we understand that. But thank y'all very much, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you. All right, moving on, moving on to item six. Mr. Kevin Hamby, our SPOS Manager, presents a monthly SPOS status report. Mr. Hamby, you have the hill.
Okay, this is our monthly SPOS update. As you can see, our actual projected numbers are still looking really good. We're about 71% through the program. We're projecting about 325 a month, and this has been the first month in a long time we haven't hit that. We've got about 308 for the February distribution, but again, we're in real good shape in overall program. So it's not really anything to be alarmed about typically February's lower distribution anyway. Folks are coming off Christmas in January, and things of that nature. Anyway, we're still doing real well on projections and actual receipts. This is our snapshot on where we are in all the encumbrances to date. I do want to draw reference to 2019 L-MIG. I know that's a little bit further down the agenda, I have number eight, but that does accommodate that bid price, and we still have a healthy balance looking at year end. Westmore Road, the number we work here in is a little bit less than that, and we increased the encumbrance to cover the bid number that you see in the middle of the year. Everything looks real, real healthy from the encumbrance standpoint and projections again, count balances and whatnot, but good.
One thing I, and what Kevin's referencing is, these are receipts we receive normally in January, February, because of the, it's winter time, our receipts are down somewhat, and then we only see a, an uptick, and that's why we monitor our SPOS revenue and our expenses on a monthly basis, so that we can review and see where we're standing and see if we can make any appropriate adjustments to any future spending. It gives us an opportunity to kind of be wise with the monies that you, as our citizens, have entrusted, as well as, one thing, maybe, maybe the next slide, or maybe Miss Jody's slide. Each month, for those who don't readily attend our meetings, the board made a decision many years ago to, each month, and I believe it's $100,000 right now, that we set aside on a monthly basis each month for any debt service that the county has. This allows us to accumulate our funds, and as those principal and interest payments are due, we are very fortunate and blessed, we have the cash in the bank, we're not having to scurry around and try to find the money when the bill is due, the cash is in the bank. So that's a simple story.
One thing I would like to add is the 2019 spring road paving number. A couple of weeks ago, we did meet with the Road Department, Rowland, and that number has been reconciled with their records, so again, we tried to check on that on a regular basis, and it's been recently done, so everything. Everything you see there has been, been vetted out, checked out.
That debt service, the perp for your, July of 2019 to January of 2020, when's our last payment? Or that, the debt service in the jail?
The jail will be December 31st, or January 1st, 2019. Twenty, I'm sorry, 2020. So that's a good thing, and here's where I say this, and I appreciate you bringing that up. When the county took on the project of the jail, which will be almost 10 years ago, the commitment wants to have the jail paid off in a 10-year period, guess what?
I think next year.
At the end of December next year, the jail will be paid off. The Jail Detention Center, Tomato Tomato, will be paid off, and we bonded out, what's it?
$10 million?
$10 million.
$10 million paid off in 10-year period. That, that's a blessing to be able to pay that off, so, and as committed, so, good point, Commissioner Goodger. All right, anything else, gentlemen? Kevin, have anything else we need to be looking out for?
Just one other thing on item nine, I mean, all those related to the part, those draws, all those bids, figure consideration, those draw in the budget too, but they had to meet those.
All, we're in on that call.
I don't mean to skip ahead, but I just wanted to mention that.
All right, well Kevin, we appreciate what you do, and if at any time you see anything that we're missing monthly, if not weekly, it's not like you don't already contact us, let us know, and we appreciate, outside of our external auditors, we have Mr. Hamby as our SPOS Manager, we have three and four sets of eyes that are monitoring the hours SPOS dollars, and that's the extra penny that we spend each month, whether it's Beattie Walmar, Ingles, the extra sales tax that we have, that's monitored numerous, numerous times over and over. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Kevin, we appreciate it. Have a good evening, stay warm. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, these are items that are work session, folks, last week, we were able to discuss at length, and there was already a strong consensus, that's why it's called consent agenda. We're allowed, under state law, when there is a strong consensus, items that we're able to potentially approve in one, in one full motion. So at this time, I will go through item by item, and I'll ask for the board's consideration. Item seven, consider resolution of revision, that sounds redundant, consider resolution of revision to the White County Code of Ordinances. That's Chapter 26, under Emergency Services. Number one, Section 26-33, Standard Operation Procedures. Section 26-57, that's Composition. Section 26-28, Purposes. Section 26-107, Emergency Management Advisory Council. Section 26-126, Payment for Services rendered by reserves of the White, of the County Fire Department. And section 26-128, that's Voluntary Firefighter Standards, Attendance and Participation. Moving on to item eight, consider award of the contract for resurfacing Westmore Lane Road to C.W. Matthews, the amount of $890,000, excuse me, $890,342.82, with funding designated from our L-MIG. L-MIG is our Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant L-MIG that we received from the State of Georgia, as well as our SPOS dollars, as referenced in Mr. Hamby's report just a moment ago. Item nine, consider bid awards for equipment for young preserve, those include the following items. Number one, bunker and infill rating to Greenville turf and tractor, an amount of $12,973.74. Item two, four-wheel drive utility tractor, that's Cave Cane Enterprises LLC, $18,900 even. Item three, utility vehicle Nelson tractor, an amount of $12,645 even. And item four, commercial grade zero-turn riding mower to Howard Brothers, an amount of $12,784 even, which brings a cumulative total of $57,302 for project funds, from our FF and E funds and our rec department. All right, gentlemen, we've had an opportunity, we discussed this, these matters at last week's work session. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Goodger, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nick, second. Any discussion amongst the board? Okay, having none, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. All right, under new business, all right. At this time, and I failed to announce this a few minutes ago, but we're okay, we'll be conducting a public hearing with a land use application filed by Mr. Jesse Darren House to redistrict property located 252 Garland Bristol Road, Salte, Nacoochee, Georgia, 30571. That's zoning it from C1 Community Commercial District to R1 Residential Single Family District, total acres to be changed to 3.76, tax parcel 071-075. This matter was on a previous meeting, but due to some conflicts that arose, we were unable to hear this, so we want to be able to hear this in just the public hearing in a few minutes. I'll be opening the floor up. We have certain procedures, and I will, I will sound like a broken record, but we conduct these, we try our best to conduct these in the same exact manner, so that we afford each applicant from, from each meeting at each public hearing the same opportunities as we do each citizen in the county. So I'll be opening the floor up for those who are, potentially could be here in support. I'll allow, excuse me, the applicant an opportunity to describe what he's doing after Mr. Sell gives us a staff report. Those who are here in support of the applicant, as well as, and I'll open the floor up, there could be any concerns, or perhaps anyone who is opposed to the applicant's request. And again, do not take it as a negative if there is no, if there are, excuse me, if there are no comments either way, that is not uncommon. So it's, it's a process that we have to go through. So, anyway, Mr. Sell, you have the hill.
Okay, this is an application for Jesse Darren House to rezone from C1 to R1. This is in the Salte-Nacoochee area off Garland Bristol Road. On January 2nd, we had a public hearing at the planning commission, did not have opposition. We also had the vote on January the 7th, and it was unanimously recommended to approve. This does sit in a small pot of commercial C1. He does have C1 land to the north-southeastern west, but again, very small number in that area, and then just beyond that is agriculture, residential in that area as well. The White County Conference of Plan Future Land Use perhaps shows this area as agriculture and low-density housing, of the property supplied by well or county water and the substate, and the purpose is to build a homestead there for, for his family.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Sell at this moment? John, thank you.
Mr. House is here.
Mr. House, will you come up for just a moment? Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. You going to build your personal house?
Yeah, that's right.
Simple story.
Pretty much.
Gentlemen, any questions you have for Mr. House? I understand your entrance will be off of Garland Bristol Road.
Yeah, that's right.
Any questions at this time? Okay, I'm not trying to just prolong this, I just want to make sure, so we appreciate you coming out. If you'll hang around just a little bit, catch any additional questions, Mr. House. All right? All right, at this time, we're going to go into our public comment section, where we will be just among here, we have certain things that we go by. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up. If there's anyone here, I'll issue three calls. If there is anyone that'd like to speak in support of Mr. House's application, I'll be issuing three calls. Raise your hand, I'll get to you as quickly as possible. Call number one. And again, it's awkward, as I say every month, we conduct one of these, there's the awkward Okay, okay, third call, once, twice. Ms. Shanda, if you will not take the record, we issued three calls for anyone here in support of Mr. House's application. Did not have anyone make a comment, so at this time, I'm going to open, I'll open the floor up for anyone who had, perhaps may have any concerns, questions, or perhaps could be opposed to Mr. House's application. Now is your opportunity to voice your concerns. That's the first call. While we're waiting, have you had any comments given your district, your?
No. Sorry, we couldn't do it last month, the month before, you got sick or something.
And just a point of reference, again, at the planning commission, there were no comments either at that one either, so. Third call, once, twice? All right, Ms. Shanda, if you will not take the record, we issued three calls for anyone who perhaps had concerns, questions, or perhaps opposed to the application, and we had no So at this time, I'm going to close the public, I'm looking around the room one more time just to make sure we don't have anyone perhaps overdo this, but we want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity. All right, closing public hearing section, public comment section. Gentlemen, do you have any additional questions at this time? All right, we'll move on to our agenda, item number 11, which is to consider the land use application filed by Mr. Jesse Darren House to redistrict property at 252 Garland Bristol Road, Salte, Nacoochee, Georgia, 30571, from C1 Community Commercial District to R1 Residential Single Family District, total acres to be changed to 3.76 acres, and again, that's tax parcel 071-075. Gentlemen, we just conducted the public hearing, you've heard the purpose of the application, that's going, Mr. House is essentially going, he's going to put his hand there on this property. Do I have a motion to approve the request as presented?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this request, C1 to R1.
Commissioner Bryant, motion to move to R1. Status, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Commissioner Holcomb, I'll take the second. We're now in discussion, is there any additional discussion by the board? Mr. House, what do you plan on starting on?
Soon as I can.
ASAP.
We're going to be instructed? Yep.
We're going to leave that alone for a minute. All right, I'm going to close the discussion, and we're going to try and get you moving in that direction. Now we have a first, a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Mr. House, on behalf of the board, thank you for choosing to live in our community and to eventually raise your family here. We thank you, and it's a good area, good community, so we appreciate it. And feel free, if you want to stay here the rest of the time, you are more than welcome to do so, this is a public hearing, but if you, if you decide otherwise, it's entirely your call. All right, item 12, consider adopting a surplus resolution for equipment assigned to White County Public Safety and White County Public Works, that's going to be tab number 12 in our packet. And as a point of clarification, this is why we left, this is a regular vote. My understanding is Director Murphy- My understanding is Director Murphy and Public Works Director Ken Jimmy were able to meet, talk, and the road department does, is a, will, will be able to use that 1993 Ford F450, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna surplus the body on that, they're gonna take the chassis.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else we need to add to our list? Here, if that's it?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, I don't wanna just go too quick here in case you were to have any additional questions, but what I'd like to entertain at this time is a motion to approve the associated items that we have in our packet excluding the 1993 Ford F450 four-door crew cab, that's the cabin chassis. The box body will be, my hair's not going with mule on this one, so that'll be surplus, correct? Do I have a motion to approve, move that motion as presented?
So.
Commissioner Nick's first, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Goodger second. Any other discussion? Have I missed anything, guys? Are we right on? Okay. All right. Close discussion, all in favor of motion six five, I say aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. Item 13, consider adopt resolution of the revision to White County Alcohol Ordinance. Ms. Shanda, you have the hill on this one?
Okay.
What we have here, and I tell you what, I'll take, let you read our summary. Number one takes all, staff summary of alcohol ordinance revisions, number one takes all reference to specific fees out of the ordinance, there will be a separate fee resolution, in that word, separate fee resolution, they'll give the board an opportunity as we, in the future, were to make any changes to the fee resolution, we do not have to open up the entire ordinance to do so. Am I correct in my description?
Yes.
Item two, clarification and cleanup of several definitions that are within your packets. Number three clarifies background investigation requirements. Item four, incorporate provisions, Senate Bill 85 that was passed in 2018, is relates to breweries, brew pubs, that was passed by state law. Item five takes out provisions that allows farm wineries to apply for distilled spirits consumption license. Item six states off-site farm right winery tasting rooms can only sell wine, serve wine, and not malt beverages or distilled spirits. And item seven, this is something the staff has needed guidance on how the board wants to address the off-site tasting rooms which are currently serving beer. Ms. Shanda, I just jumped ahead, I'll be, yes, you need for us to elaborate on?
Yeah, I will say that on item five, in the ordinance, there was one place that said that farm winery tasting rooms could sell, could apply for and sell distilled spirits, and there was another place that said that they couldn't. So we're just, you know, asking for that point to be clarified, it's just mostly, you've been given the pages that have changes on them. There are pages, of course, in between that, you know, had no changes, but those are the items that we're asking for clarification on to better help us administer the ordinance.
I think we all agree, and from our work session, just the comments and the consensus I received, you know, farm wineries, they serve wine. They are to sell the wine associated with the, not with or being here, I don't know how, it's just like that, that may not be correct English, but you know what I'm trying to say there, I believe.
And the ordinance will still allow for the primary farm winery premise to have a retail consumption license for beer. So that is still allowed at the primary farm winery side, but the property, ordinance does state that that is only for the primary farm winery side and does not extend to the off-site tasting rooms.
Is that language explicit in the ordinance?
It is now.
Okay.
With these revisions.
All right. And item seven, guidance on how the board wants to address off-site tasting rooms currently serving beer.
Yeah, my, I thought that we just let it go ahead for this year and that they just wouldn't be renewed at the end of the year.
Okay. All right. That can be a consensus. Ms. Shanda, I'm just asking a question. From a clerk's perspective, if I ask for a motion to adopt the resolution as presented with the summary, is there anything that we need to clear up before I ask for such a motion?
And one, I have one other point in here that I wanted to bring up, is on the license fees.
What page are you on?
I don't know, it's.
Or sections?
Near the end.
It's the end of the 13, about the next to last page.
And on the license fees there, it says, it's talking about, Section C under there, it's at the end of the event and an applicant.
Right here.
It's less than a calendar year period, the license fee shall be prorated down to the current month. And I, I just think that our, her cost there is a lot more than what the fees we would collect for one month. I think that we should have a minimum of either six months or not less than three months anyway, that they have to pay a fee for, because they, Ms. Shanda said they bring this up for the alcohol, maybe costs us about $95 every time we convene the board, so the fee may, that we collect may be a lot less than, than we, cost, than it would cost. So I think that we should, I would just say change it to six months myself, and not less than six months, that in the event the application is for less than a calendar year, the license shall be prorated down to not less than six months.
Okay.
That would coincide with the business licenses, we prorate in that manner for business licenses as well.
That makes even more sense than that. Okay. Mr. Hoffman, Commissioner Nick's, how do you feel about that?
I'm, I'm.
And Ms. Shanda, if you'll make that.
It's more lenient than the city's are.
I don't know, what do they do?
Yeah, up in Helen, you buy in December, you pay your $5,000, you buy January 1st, you pay another $5,000, so there is no.
I'd say this is a bit lenient what they are. If I'm, if I'm, not wrong, though.
Well, sounds like there's, there's a consensus for the term to be changed not less than six months. Is that, does that help, Ms. Shanda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm gonna ask for a motion, adopt resolution on the revision of White County Alcohol Ordinance based upon the summary just read along with our, sorry, I just turned the page in the event, that application is less than a calendar year, the licensing fee shall be prorated not less than six months, as well as incorporate in items, at least items six and seven that allow for the rest of the calendar year until the next, until January 1st. All right. It's long to put together in a short period of time, that's for sure. All right. Do you want to have a motion based upon that reference?
I believe we approve.
Okay, Commissioner Goodger first.
I'll say.
Commissioner Bryant second, we're now in discussion.
Here, I thought, under, just under the farm, farm winery.
What section over there?
I didn't have page, I don't have page numbers on mine, so.
I'm sorry about that, I had a revision that had page numbers on it, but I must have put the one that did not have.
It's section, it says license required at the top of it there.
Six dash.
Six, six dash 140.
Okay, hold on. Okay, I'm there.
Okay, you know, we took the sale of, the retail sale of malt beverages out, and it's, I see that the term is still in this down under Section C right there, says retail sales of wine and malt beverage, you know, I've got a question about that.
Where's this retail sale of wine and malt beverage for consumption on premises, license shall require the all consumption at the farm winery site or approved tasting rooms.
I just thought, I just thought we took, taken the malt beverage out.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And there, and in D1, I saw malt beverage again listed there.
I will say that I do agree that Section 6 needs to be clarified, but for the tasting rooms on the farm winery premise, they're still gonna be allowed to serve, so I guess we would just have to clarify that, that that's only on the primary farm winery premise.
Yes.
Not the off-site tasting.
Yeah, it's, they're allowed, they would be allowed on the primary premise, which is.
Yeah.
The vineyard.
Yeah.
The farm, whatever you wanna call it, that's allowed.
You wonder why we even allow it in the tasting rooms, because that's, that's supposed to be just an extension of trying to sell their product out there, and we're giving them a, giving them another.
You don't have to sell, to sell beer, do you?
I think that's based upon state law, state law allows beer sales.
Yeah, but I mean, if we wanted to make it Dry County, we could make it Dry County too.
And as a matter of fact, the farm wineries, they don't pay the full retail consumption price, they only pay a dollar.
Yeah.
To be able to do the retail consumption.
Is that under state law?
That's under the fee schedule.
I, to me, I, the tasting room is an extension for them to sell their product out, someplace promote their product out. Also, they were allowed to do wine in there, but you know, beer is not even something, and, and probably the beer may not even be beers that are made here in White County.
Okay, Ms. Shanda, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're talking about, in our definitions, we have two types of tasting rooms.
Yes.
On-site, which is at the vineyard.
Yes.
And on the off-site, perhaps we need to change our terminology and say off-site, malt beverages not allowed.
And I think that's what we've done in this, in that particular section, I think if we said that all consumption be at the farm winery site or on-site tasting rooms.
Or put that term, or on-site? Now, we're on Section C, I mean, that item C, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Or on-site, which means the.
But you can't sell beer at the off-site.
Based upon this, you can sell beer at the winery. Correct?
The farm wineries have been able to get a retail consumption and a retail package license for malt beverages since the inception of the ordinance for a dollar. That's always been part of it. It just seemed that over time, these farm winery off-site tasting rooms had also began to serve beer, but they've always, they, I mean, they've always, that's certainly, and I think that's pretty normal, I guess. I think the surrounding counties allow their farm wineries to have malt beverages at their primary farm winery site, but I mean, certainly it's up to the board.
It just seemed like to me that they, they got wineries in here, and then we allowed tasting room, but then they want to extend it a little bit further to do tasting rooms with beer, and then, and they wanted to do distilled spirits, so we cut that out. So it, it, it just seemed like to me that they, you know, that this is not just selling their product, it's making some money off of being a bar.
That's just, that's great. Opinions? Good, bad, different?
All of them are allowed to do that now, or they all doing that now, I suppose?
Yes, all, all of the farm wineries pay the extra dollar.
I would too.
For the malt beverage, yeah.
We have the ability to change that.
Change it.
Did any or all of them apply?
We're taking it down this ordinance.
Did any or all of them?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hoffman.
Did any or all of the, the wineries apply or ask for a distilled spirits license? So we just.
And our ordinance conflicted itself, like I said in one part, it said that they could get that license, and in another part it said they couldn't, so that's why we wanted to clarify, but we don't currently have any farm wineries with the distilled spirits license. And that they would have to pay the full price for in the ordinance, the way it's currently set.
We're gonna put in a not to allow the distilled spirits on the one, okay? I'm giving that to you. I don't know about the others.
Hi, I'm Diane Mize. I've been an artist for all my life, and I've been an art teacher for well over 50 years, first in high school, then in college, and then in my own, my own school, and now I'm teaching online. I have people who've asked me, can I do some of these tips via video? So this begins a new series. And we stroke it in. Now, if we surround that gray with any color, the complement, or the gray will take on the complement of that color. In this case, we're gonna be using black, white with a little black in it for the sky. In other words, we're gonna be insisting that black play the role of blue. Check every week to see what new video idea we've come up with, enjoy these, and let us hear from you.
I think we need to look at the fee schedule, that that's kinda got my attention.
I was hoping while they're doing that with a dollar thing, so, I mean, why not? Yeah.
And I did behind the alcohol ordinance revisions, I did include a, the current fee schedule, and on the first page of that, it does show that extra dollar.
I'm just gonna, I need to get a feel where everybody, everybody's wanting to go here, do we want to, on-site tasting rooms, leave as is and allow malt beverages to continue on the on-site tasting rooms at the vineyards? Commissioner Hoffman, I think I heard you said, you said you're mind leaving that alone.
Yeah, on-site, on-site.
But look at the fee schedule at later date.
Well, we will look at it now, that's okay too.
Well, I need, I need to take care of this, this, we've got this.
I'm gonna go with leaving like it is, okay?
So. Here we go, move. Where, where are you? I'll be with you. And we'll be back here in a second. It's a leaving it like it is, it's sounding.
Yeah.
Is, is what? Is, uh, they can sell beer at both places?
No, no, they can sell beer only at the on-site, that's on the premise of the.
Farm.
At the farm. They cannot sell it at the off-site tasting room.
Okay. And then we'll go back and we'll look at the fees and what we're.
We'll open that up in just a few minutes, 'cause I wanna, I wanna get this kinda behind us, so. So, Ms. Shanda, is there anything else that we need in that? All right. Give you one second here. Commissioner Goodger, you made the motion, Commissioner Bryant, you made the second, correct? All right. The motion was, and it did, the motion did not include taking that out, so we're okay there, if I'm understanding myself correct? So, all right.
One thing about the wording, like Habersham Winery, that is a winery in Helen, South Helen, but they don't have a vineyard, so I would not include vineyard in the wording.
Well, that whole Habersham Winery is its own entity, they have a re.
Re, within the.
It's a whole, it's something that doesn't even fall underneath our ordinance, it's under state law, so it doesn't even, we're not, we're not even getting to that one. Am I saying that correctly, Ms. Shanda?
Yes, and vineyard isn't, is a reference, it's, it's farm winery, and they are, a licensed farm winery.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we go, clarify on the motion, I'll clamp this here up a little bit.
All right. The motion is adopt resolution, the revision, excuse me, the revision with the summary as we described a few minutes ago, it's in your packet, that will allow these entities that are continuing to serve, they'll have the rest of the year, and it will not be allowed beginning January 1st as far as malt beverages. be allowed beginning January 1st, as far as malt beverages at their off-site tasting, correct? All right, and that, that's this, okay, did I clear that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Clear.
Okay, all right, Ms. Shannon, I mean, seriously, I want to make sure we're all, we're singing the same song here.
Yes, and that those off-site tasting rooms that are currently serving beer, that they be allowed to do that until the end of this license year.
Until the license expires.
And then we're going to change section, section six dash one forty-two to allow for only half a year proration.
Correct.
Yep.
All right. All right, close discussion, all of the most significant, I say no, I oppose, say no, the motion carries, now, let's get to the fee section, since that brought up a whole nother caveat, because our fee section is now a, Ms. Shannon, given the fact that this is a separate, do I need to motion to vote on this, since we took it out, or are we okay to go ahead and entertain it right now, if we were to make changes to it right now?
I think you are, because it's, it's part of the alcohol ordinance, we just took the fees out, put it in a separate resolution.
Okay, all right, all right, the question was, and I'm looking at midway through that very first page, to sell beer, malt beverage, or wine in unbroken packages on farm winery premises at retail and not for resale, we've currently got one dollar, and it says to sell at retail, excuse me, let me start this all over, to sell at retail malt beverage or wine for consumption on the farm winery premise to consumers, one dollar, okay, and I'm just telling you that the reception I got from the board, there's a feeling to change it from a dollar, let's just put it bluntly, what's your feelings, gentlemen?
We're charging around fifteen hundred, correct?
Primary farm winery.
Yes, I believe so. And for each tasting room that they have on their farm winery premise, they pay a hundred dollars.
Correct.
And then for each off-site tasting room, they pay seven fifty.
Which, after this point forward, is only for their wine product from their farm.
For another farm winery, and that, state law allows that.
Okay, another farm winery.
Is this something, is this something that the alcohol board needs to, maybe address more of it, we're kind of taking it out of the league here, Mr. Hoffman.
Well, they can't change fees, that's only...
I know, I know they can't, but something that might be, they may be involved in, I mean, go on, they can't change at the end of the year, for my opinion, right?
But if, but if we've got it opened up now, where it's already on the presses, I mean, and that's, if the majority doesn't want to touch the one dollar, I mean, I should be real, I believe we're missing some revenue here.
And they give me this, I don't, we still want to step on their toes, and they can put my ass in there, and not, not asking for their input, I'm just making...
My opinion, they, they can't vote on it anyway.
Well, they're too much information, but...
Yeah.
Just trying to throw toes before, it's saying, I don't think that's the first...
And if I want to table this to another meeting, I'm fine with it, too, it's just, I need to...
I don't know what somebody might think about the one dollar right there, I was just thinking that if it was a hundred and twenty dollars, that would be like ten dollars a month, that bill was like thirty-three cents a day.
Where did the one dollar come from?
I don't know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we were doing all this, you know, well, started this, because we're looking at fifteen hundred, you drop down the bottom, you're the retail, so you've got a restaurant, you're going to pay for twelve for the same thing. So, I think, there again, I could be correct, or incorrect, when we was doing this, we, I think this discussion come up, and I may be wrong, but between where we're charging three hundred more, what they're doing, but they're getting down to one hundred and sixty-fourty, so...
Back to my other question, where, where did the one dollar, where did it originate?
It had been from us, we did this.
When we did this ordinance originally, there was no provision for them to have any kind of discounted fee, and all the farm wineries showed up to the meeting to dispute that, and that is, that's how it came about, I mean, it was something that was, you know, just, you know, from them expressing that they felt like it was, you know, they brought a lot of tourism to the county, they, you know, were a big part of agriculture in our community, and they just didn't feel like they should have to pay full price in addition to the primary farm winery site.
Well, so I like the one quarter gray system, it's like I have for a dollar, and that's...
There should be no complaints there, why don't we do this, let's, let's bring this back to a work session for further discussion, they give us not a gene to read.
Yeah, I'd be a murderer about to say.
Because that, that, this is why, we're actually having a work session right now, discussing, is the way we are, so...
And we have taken the fees out of the ordinance, so we're just going to continue to use the same fee schedule if we have any applicants come forward, until we make...
And before we, before we get to that workshop, I'd like to know how many we're talking about, how many applications is out there, how many applicants we've got on that side of this topic.
We do not have any current applications that are outstanding, everyone that is licensed or has applied for a license has paid their fee for the year.
For the farm winery?
Yes.
Any of those?
We have Mount Jonas, and...
That's what I said, bring that information back to us at the next board meeting, please.
Okay, all right, we're, we're going to move on, this, this is going to come back to a work session, we're getting bogged down here, so, all right, item fourteen, Ms. Shannon, no, no, not Ms. Jody, you got the hill, finance director, present a monthly financial status report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this will be the financial report for January 2019. Revenues received for January were eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars, expenditures, one million, five hundred, twenty thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, for year-to-date totals, our revenues are at seventy-four percent collected, expenditures are at fifty-five percent spent, and January would be the seventh month of our fiscal year, so we should be somewhere around fifty-eight percent. Alcohol taxes and fees for the fiscal year 2019, license fees collected, forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, excise tax collected, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, for a total on your alcohol fees and taxes of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is sixty-seven percent received of what was budgeted. Title alcohol tax collected for January, ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, for a fiscal year total of five hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is fifty-seven percent received. Local option sales tax received for January, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, sixty-five dollars, for a fiscal year total of one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, which is also sixty-seven percent received. Hotel motel tax received for the month of January, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, for a fiscal year total of six hundred and forty-three, six hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, which puts us at eighty The January's lost received was three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and nine dollars, both Cleveland and Helen received forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, and we were able to put one hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars into the county project fund. For a calendar year history of 2019, January being the first month would put us at a three eighty-five, total to date, we have collected sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eight dollars from the 2014's lost. And on the last slide, it shows our separate funds, solid waste is at fifty-seven percent spent, nine-one-one, sixty percent, drug task force, sixty, thirty-six percent, and Anoda is at fifty-six percent. And that's all we have for you.
Ms. Jody, thank you, and again, we've got, for those who don't attend our meeting regularly, our county, as most counties are, we're property tax heavy when it comes to October, November, and that's when we receive a lion's share of our revenue, so when you see our revenues, back on that first page, you know, we're seventy-four percent of our annual revenues, expenditures is fifty-five percent, and that looks great, you know, we're ahead of the game, round numbers by, oh, three and a half billion dollars, that sounds well and good, we don't have any more property taxes, probably coming in between now and June thirtieth, so that's where we have to watch, watch our monies, how they come in now, so, Ms. Jody, thank you, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Ms. Jody at this time? Okay, all right, Mr. Melton, we'll get to your county manager comments in just a second, I'll go and hop on there, I know we've had some discussions about fire station parking lot. Want to go, start? Fire station needs to be repaid.
Yes, sir, well, I know, because I've gone and looked at it, the fire station six and parking lot has, has been in bad shape in quite some time, and would like to find out how y'all want to proceed on that, if that's something you want, want to get started, get done this spring, or...
Well, we did, we talked about it last year, we're just going to get around to it.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to.
We've talked about this several times, we've had several public works directors to look at it, and it's getting to the point where it's really getting, it's really bad. The weight of apparatus that are coming in and out of there now are just, it's more than what we had in the past, it's just tearing it up, and it's going to be some extensive work, a lot of what the road department can do, but it's, it's a lot of extensive work, and so...
Wasn't there some bad base up there, something?
Yeah, they could go down about two and a half to three foot, and dig it out on both sides.
That's what I was thinking, then they went up there and put some kind of a sewer down, but if I'm not mistaken, a few years ago, didn't they spray the ground with something up there?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
That's before my time, sir.
But we still spend a lot of money spraying that on the ground.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
I'm innocent this time.
I mean, I forgive you, I just don't forget it, but I forgive you.
That was before my time, sir.
And that was D E during Ed's time?
It was, and when you asked, it's been, it's been in, in the last few years, yeah, it's been in the last few years.
Why don't we do this, let's, let's go out, let's, let's get some bids, let's see what it's going to cost to dig the parking lot correctly, and if that means...
Tell me again about three, going up to subgrade at three foot?
Yes, sir. Three foot?
Who's brainchild is that?
It's really bad, and then... I will have to refer that to...
I mean, they do have, you can, you can put cloth down, you know, you can dig down a foot or so and put down some cloth, and kind of hold that.
When he probed it, it sunk, I mean, he went right straight.
Well, it's just over sugar, don't it?
Yeah, that's what he did.
See, if he goes three foot, then they could ask for a heavier duty truck next year.
All right, why don't we do this, I'd like to see staff, let's get some, let's get some bids and plans.
Plans and bids, yes.
They'll have to spray it, the bids.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mr. Melton, bring us an update regarding Dandy Lane and where we are on that project.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just happened to notice today that the New Fairfield Inn and Suites in Helen is advertising, opening May of 2019, but as you all know, Dandy Lane has not been touched.
It's a dirt, it's a dirt road.
I went by there today, and there are surveys takes all over Dandy Lane, somebody has surveyed, but we asked the, Mr. Paul Patel, who is the owner of that hotel, we asked him over a year ago, to submit plans and specifications for improving that road to us, which he did, and they were not satisfactory with our engineer, we sent those plans and specifications back, asked him to redo those, we have not seen those plans and specifications back to approve those, so that they can do the appropriate work on Dandy Lane, that's kind of where we're at, waiting on the hotel owner to send us some plans and specifications, I also talked to Jerry Elkin, the city manager in Helen today, and he again ensured me that they would not issue a certificate of occupancy to that hotel until that road had been properly approved with our specifications.
Why don't you send out an official request to the owner of the property, to provide a status update regarding our engineers' spec request, and where are we standing at the board's requirement requesting that, because I don't, I don't want to get to May, and they're trying to open, and we come in one morning, and all of a sudden, somebody's half done the driveway, just to get up to there, it doesn't meet our specs, I don't want to get caught up in bridges now.
Where is the DOT at in this, I know that's on the state route.
Uh, the last, the last conversation I had with our engineer, who had called the DOT permitting office, they have no permit to do anything there, just at that point, and I called the DOT permitting office this afternoon, and I didn't get a response, I have a call in to them, I've asked them to return my call.
Won't they have to approve something off of the state route?
Yes, yes, they have to approve the...
If it's upgraded, they have to...
They have to approve the upgrade of Dandy Lane's before they can do anything, they need a state perm.
Would they not know this?
They do, they, they are aware of it, because they've been told that, because I personally told Mr. Patel that they had to have a DOT perm, he's, he's fully aware.
I think we need to send a status notice update, find out what's going on.
I've, I've got to get somebody to respond, the DOT to respond.
Yeah, stay on the DOT, let me get somebody.
All right, Mr. Melton, do you have anything else for the board to say?
No, sir.
Okay, before I go into public space and handle comments, I do want to make reference, as you all know, we have been, I'm going to say diligently meeting about the short-term rental subject, and trying to put our arms around, excuse me, how best to represent you as our constituents in this whole subject, we've gone from one end to the other, I'm going to say unfortunately, though, we found out Friday, that there's been a bill introduced, House Bill 523, that would prohibit counties, cities, local municipalities from passing any regulations that are to regulate short-term rental in our local community, in other words, the state would preempt local home rules, and that was bothersome, and I wanted to let you all know, and I believe Ms. Shannon has copies of the proposal, I would encourage you, either come give one or Google it, House Bill 523, now, crossover day at Capitol, and I won't get into the nuances of how this works, I believe it's March 7th, correct?
Yes, sir.
If this doesn't come out of committee, and doesn't cross over from the House to the Senate, it's dead for this session, but I don't, I'll just be real with you, we don't want, we even want rest on our morals, and let the state attempt to preempt local home rule, so... So I would encourage you to reach out to our U as well as we have already, to our House representative. As you know, my county is split three ways. We have Representative Ted Rogers, Representative Lee Hawkins, and Representative Matt Gerler. And just so you'll know, Representative Hawkins is one of the co-sponsors of the bill. And that, that called us off guard.
Yes.
So, and I have also reached out to Senator Gooch. And Gooch has responded to me that he doesn't feel that this would move forward over to the Senate from the House, but we cannot assume anything. So I would encourage you to get a copy of this, what Ms. Shanda has up here. We're hoping that it doesn't cross over and it's a moot point, but we can, again, rest on our laurels. Gentlemen, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
ACCG, contacted with them today. By being on the board, I get all of their briefings and all. They're fighting this too in the mail. But contacts that I've got at the Capitol, don't feel like there's a lot of, no legs under this, but I don't, you know, we can't just lay down and pretend that they've got no legs on it. The possibility that this can go away, but I suggest to this board that we keep it working, pass whatever we want to pass and make them take it away, so that's what we have to do. I'm probably being told by them what we can do, what we can do.
I contacted ACCG as well and also GMA, the municipal association. And they're both, they're both against it. They're pretty powerful lobbyists, so.
If I understand this bill right, correct me if wrong, you bred it, I bred it. I bred some of these bills in the last few days. I've only got one good bill, got voted down this afternoon, you can read it. But my understanding is that we can't even ask if they paid their hotel taxes, and that's a state tax. Do they not care whether they get their state tax or not? I don't know where this is coming from. Well, I, Ben Lee Hawkins has been friends a long time. He's an old family friend, but he got a pretty intense tip from anybody.
Well, that's the weird thing about the bills. Usually legislation will give some little explanation about why it's necessary, you know, to protect the public or whatever, but it doesn't give any reason why this should be prohibited.
That's what we're asking too.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I want to assure you, we've tried to reach out as quick as possible. We learned about this last week. But you all vote them in just like you voted us in. Now, unfortunately, on that side of the coin, they're not as accessible as we are. We see everyone at Eagles, Walmart, you know, at church and so on. We hear from you guys. I think they need to hear from you all as well. And they're hearing from us as well, so.
So would this go all the way down to the covenants restrictions at homeowners association boards?
Now, that, that. My interpretation is that if a private subdivision passes its own covenants, it doesn't preempt that. It just prohibit, it would prohibit local governments, whether it be a county or a city, from passing any restrictive policies or delve deeper, ask for information, it wouldn't let us do anything. It's very frustrating and it goes against what we call home rule, us being a government at the local level. So, Mr. Hall.
As I read this, you're telling your listeners, I'm not a five day patient. Right on. Period.
He doesn't mention covenant.
This is the entirety of it. This is all it is. There and there, that's it. Just like three paragraphs.
Very short, very short.
Now, Mr. Tucker, you alluded to the fact that we're considering taking it out of our land use and putting it in standalone or?
I'm saying whatever you do, if that passes, you can forget it, that the state's regulations will.
Oh, yes, they would supersede anything that we do. Whatever we pass, it would make it an old boy.
But they'll also set it in favor, we talked to you about home rule too, how they're all in favor of home rule.
Yeah, I know that.
It's not like you got your hand in your pocket while your family's at dinner. I'm sorry, that's probably a good analogy, but anyway, sorry.
This is the second overreach that we have with the state this year, second or third. So, you know, they're, I don't know what their deal is up there.
Folks, I believe there's a lot of heavy lobbyists down at Capitol.
It's called money.
That are trying to influence how we here in rural Georgia operate. And that doesn't go well with our board, and I think I speak for all of them, just coming out.
I just believe, I believe in home rule. I believe we, I believe we can deal with the people that live in this county better than they can. I believe we understand the heartbeat of this county better than they do.
One thing I'm going to say on the record, again, this is why we only need one representative instead of three. It's no disrespect to the three we got, but I went to Gainesville ten years ago to try to fight that map. And we got three and split this county up until we get, I don't got one state senator.
One of them might have been in White County since the last.
That's what I mean, so you know, it's my two cents, word.
Now, that's why the, that consensus next year will be very important. You know, we've got, yeah, we're a growing community here in northeast Georgia. We need to be, if not down to one, at least down to two. I want to record saying that.
The reaportment probably won't take until about 2023.
Yeah, so.
I just throw hell the last one went. I mean, you go down there and you, Apollo's went and we told them how we felt and what was happening. And then you go to United Community Bank at that show, and then you got one who's not in office no more. I won't name no names because I don't get a Christmas card from him. But he's telling you what the good deal this is going to be and, you know, we can't go north, we can't go south, we can't go east. They take half of White County north end, and then, you know, they're still split it up with three. So I guess I still got to crawl from then, being lied to then, so. That's my, so I'll stop.
Get your copy, call our legislative, call our, we have three state reps and a state senator. I would encourage you, encourage the House side, this is where it was submitted, House Bill 523. Encourage them, it doesn't need to come out of committee, much less get on the floor. So having said all that, I've already kind of jumped ahead here, but we go from the floor up. Is there anything anyone would like to say for the good of the cause or any concerns you may have? Because our blood's boiling a little bit already, so raise your hand and I'll get to you as quickly as possible. Yes, Ms. Hall? Ms. Hall, if you'll give us your address, we got to do all this for the record, so.
I'm Lillian Hall. My address is back four three Lees Crossing, L E I G H S Crossing in Cleveland. Wow, you laid one. I can't believe Lee Hawkins doing that. And I'll be talking to Lee tomorrow. And I'm going to give you a little preview of what I'm going to tell him. Okay. We had the misfortune of being subjected to some of these rentals, short-term rentals. And that's a misnomer to start with because the objective, somebody has one of these properties is to keep somebody in there at all times. It may not be the same person, maybe different people, but keep it occupied at all times. Because it's a business. It has nothing to do with raising your family or living out your retirement or anything like that. It's just fun games for them and not for the people that have to endure what goes on. And I'm going to tell you what has gone on in White County from a personal standpoint, the things you're subjected to or parties that go on till two, three o'clock in the morning. You can't begin to get any sleep, you can't open your windows, even if it wasn't closed, you can't sleep. I had people come and shoot forty-fives right outside our, right outside the window. You know how I had a forty-five, do you? Just over and over and over me. We had kids come with ATVs and rip and roar up and down our private drive, our private road that we have to maintain, tearing it up, getting on our private property, tearing it up. They had nude parties all one weekend. Yes, yes indeed, right here in White County, believe it or not. At one time, they even had a live band with the speakers out like you wouldn't believe. And to make it worse, they were playing that gosh uncle rap music. I mean, it was horrible. And any complaints that you made were not dealt with. In fact, if you got a return phone call in three weeks, you were lucky. And when I did have audacity to complain, I was threatened. I was threatened. And it was not a pleasant experience, the whole thing. I could tell you a lot, we had sexual harassment. It was terrible. I mean, we had to get an attorney. I went to the courthouse, I did, did what I needed. But I've got the resources to do that. A lot of people in this town don't have the resources to do that. They depend on y'all. And that's what's upsetting me. I'm semantically, I could just, I guess I'm going to have to put my lobbying hat back on and go down there to the Capitol again, but I'm going to go sit Lee down in Gainesville tomorrow. This is ridiculous. What, if we kill that and do have, right, to get some ordinance in here, it's going to be hard to anticipate what can come out of this. Because I would never have anticipated what I went through and my family went through. And enforcement kind of concerns me too, not even enforcement. I mean, who are you going to call at three o'clock in the morning saying, I can't get any sleep? Do we lay it on to the law enforcement? That's not, that's not adequate use of law enforcement powers. I could have called, we could have called a sheriff in numerous towns, but I don't think that's the way you need to deal with something like this. We need to have a complaint system set up so that people, no, we don't. I love the comments that I read in the paper from Mr. Bryant and Mr. Nix. I appreciated that. And I appreciate listening, that let me be able to get on that call thing. I was so impressed, how thorough you were trying to be, and it was really impressive. But we need a complaint system. We need, we need to be able to talk to our local officials when something like this goes down. We need a planning commission. We don't need a standalone thing. To me, that's a succession. We don't need to loosen the controls. We need to tighten them because the things that can happen in, I mean, you know, a four thousand, four thousand square foot house with twenty people, that, that's a motel. You know, it's like, you know, is it a tasting thing or is it a bar? This is, this is not a home house, home rental. This is, this is a motel. In fact, a motel would be preferable because you got to leave, somebody can go complain if somebody's making too much noise in the middle of the night. In this situation, you don't. But a complaint system that could be based on the number and severity of complaints of people, and if it gets out of hand, you ought to be able to revoke their permits. And there's a lot of these rental houses out there that don't even have permits. There's certainly one in my neighborhood. And so I'm real proud that y'all are on top of this, you know, like I said, that they've introduced in the state.
You need to read the bill. It, it, Lee didn't, he's not, he's just one of the co-sponsors. He's not, his name's not at the top of the list. His name's on the list. His last name on the co-sponsor. I sent him a text Friday morning and told him about some instances that we've had here and so far I haven't heard from him.
And stripping up the trees all the way down to the, to the riverbank, we had that in Lake Lear. When I served on the grand jury watchdog committee down in Atlanta, I mean, down in Gainesville, that was common. And people would say, hey, I paid a hundred thousand dollars for that lot. I don't mind paying a few extra thousand to cut those trees down. And they cut not, I don't know, their property, all the way down on core property. And so they played willing, they gladly played, paid the fine to get their view. And then when they had to plant the little pine trees to replace it, they just go out and salt them so they wouldn't grow. I mean, this is ridiculous. The river, I talked to river people today, they're really up on what's going on up here with that one property. And any kind of penalties like fines and all of that, they have to be severe. They have to hurt because if they don't, it's just going to be overhead. And that's another thing to watch because if the E P D ever did fine a company or anything like that, it was so minimal, it didn't matter. They just marked it up overhead. And I want to veer off of this topic just shortly, for a short time. I've mentioned it before, but with all the splosh money we got rolling around and everything, there's one thing that we really do need to do in this county, and that's get an X-ray machine at county courthouse. We've got some fine duties up there and they need that. We don't need to wait for a tragedy to do something like that. That needs to be done. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate the hard work and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Look around the room. Anybody else? Ms. Hall?
I don't know exactly what I'm fixing to say, but this is where we're at. In our subdivision, we are restating our covenants.
Go do this, because Ms. Hall did, I need you to come to the, I'm sorry. I need you to come to the, we got to get you on the record.
Okay. Linda Hubbard, and I'm talking about Swiss Colony. I happen to chair the Covenant Spitals Committee. Well, we have been working on this for over a year, probably about a year and a half. So I have been at the web, right at the computer, pulling everything I can find about it. Well, and I found, I guess it was last week when I found the House bill that they had back in Georgia, year before last, but it never got out of committee. So I've been watching, trying to find out if they were going to put in another bill and pull it out. But it was, what I'm concerned about is that we can sit all day long and read all we want and write all we want. But then when we get through meeting, and we have some pretty good meetings among the members trying to get at what should or should not be done. Now, when we lose all the support at the county level, and I don't know what world the state's going to come up with, but if they put all this back on the, like, individual colony, like Swiss Colony, where.
Your, your private homeowners association?
Homeowners Association, thank you. I'm getting pretty, the more I think about it, the more aggravated I am about it. Because if they want to know anything, they ought to get out there and ask somebody or either do something, but let the local people handle it. So my thing is, you know, what are we going to do now? We're going to sit here and wait to see what they're going to do? And I think we just move right ahead and do what we think we ought to do. And then if we have to go back and rewrite, we'll just go back and rewrite. It looks like, from the sound of it, they're going to dump all the responsibility back on the subdivision and the associations. And that's not going to be good.
Well, Ms. Hall, and I'll use that as a segue into this. I feel confident, I see, very confident I represent all our board. We have every intention, Ms. Hall as well, of moving forward with our own short-term rental regulations. Period. You know, whatever happens by Friday, whether this moves forward or not, we're moving forward with our own. Now, my hope is it dies by Friday. It's a moot point, but at the end of the day, we want, we're going to continue forward. And Ms. Hall, I'm going to use this as well, so you'll know, and I know you probably weren't able to attend our last meeting. What came out of our meeting, the, the board is very adamant that we're wanting to retain, I'm going to use the word control, I don't know if that's a good term or oversight perhaps, that if an applicant comes before under these criteria, we'll still have to come before the board commissioners in certain, in a lot of instances, because, is that correct, Mr. Bryant? Is that what you're?
We can, that's, that's my desire, I don't know, but somebody needs to oversee it.
Yeah.
For the social planning ones, and somebody's got to make a policy.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to keep our finger on it and not become a free-for-all. So having said all that, I just wanted to kind of, I might not give you the comfort tonight, but that's where we're going with all this. All right. Last call.
When we were talking with Steve on Wednesday right there, we were talking about Shepherd Drive. And he recommended that when we do L-MIG next time, that we add an additional price for. price for Shepherd Drive onto the ALMIG. So I just wanted to be sure that our staff gets that, that they have a price for Shepherd Drive that's good, and we can add that on to our, on top of our ALMIG and put a note on there that this is for Shepherd Drive that the state tore up.
Is that on this year's ALMIG or next year's ALMIG? Or it has to be on next year's ALMIG?
We've already got the money, we're doing Westland right with that.
This year's ALMIG has already been submitted and approved and et cetera.
I know, Shepherd Drive is a bad, they got a lot of bad holes in it out there, I think, so.
Mr. Bryant?
Did she cook this up or not?
Mr. Hawkins, do you have anything? Mr. Nick, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. Upcoming announcements. Monday, March 25th, we're having a work session at 4:30 here. Monday, April 1st, a regular meeting at 4:30 here as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, your diligence. I was hoping to get you out here by six o'clock, but it's six oh, well, actually, it is six o'clock by, by, six oh one by my cell phone. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Bryant first, Mr. Hawkins second. I oppose, say no. Thank you very much. I thank you all.